Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Agora Hills City Council meeting. Please silence all cell phones and other electronic devices. If you wish to submit or speak, oh, sorry, if you wish to speak, please submit a written comment and hand it to our city clerk prior to the public comment portion of the item. I am now going to call this meeting to order. The city of Agora Hills acknowledges that we occupy land originally and still inhabited and cared for by the Chumash Nation. Descendants of Chumash still remain, and we honor and pay our respects to their elders and various groups that make up the past, present, and emerging as they continue their stewardship of our lands and waters. We have a responsibility and commitment to elevate the stories, culture, and community of the original inhabitants of the city of Agora Hills, and we are grateful to have the opportunity to live and work on these ancestral lands. I will now defer, it says, to older American of the year, Randy Paller, but I think it's better to say the younger.
Right hand over heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll now defer to our city clerk for the roll call.
Thank you, good evening. Councilmember Anderson?
Present.
Councilmember Anstad?
Here.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Wolf?
Here.
Mayor Sylvester?
Here.
Mayor Sylvester, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We had no closed session this evening, so there is no report. Now we move on to approval of the agenda. Will the maker of the motion and the second to approve the agenda state your names?
This is Deborah Klein Lopez. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
City Councilman Chris Anstad, I'll second.
Lovely. I'll defer to our city clerk for the roll call. What is that? Not mine. Amber, hello? Oh. Sorry, everyone. The system's working. Somewhere.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Anstad?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you. Now we're going to move on to the highlight of our evening, the annual City of Agora Hills Volunteer Recognition, and I'm going to defer to Community Services.
Thank you, Mayor Sylvester. On behalf of the Department of Community Services, we'd like to thank you all for attending this evening. As I call your name, please join us up front where a city council member or the mayor will thank you on behalf of the City of Agora Hills. These gifts are a small token of our appreciation. Once you receive your gift, please remain standing so a picture can be taken of you and your group. We would like to ask that you hold your applause until the entire group has been called so that we can hear everyone's name, and I do apologize in advance if I mispronounce your name. At this point, I would like to ask Councilmember Klein Lopez to step down to the gift area to present our first few groups.
Haven't I done my welcome yet?
Not yet.
Oh, sorry.
Please hold.
I thought I was put on hold. So, thank you all for being here this evening. On behalf of the City Council, I would like to welcome you to our annual volunteer recognition event. Tonight, we are celebrating the hundreds of volunteers who contribute countless hours of their time and energy to make the city of Agora Hills a better community. Thank you to all of the volunteers of 2024 that are here tonight and those who are absent, for your involvement is impressive and truly valued. Each volunteer offers their own unique skills in a variety of groups and committees. Tonight, we will order some extraordinary people for going above and beyond their call for civic duty. The City Council is giving each volunteer a power bank for cellphone or device charging. We thought that was apt, considering everything we've been through for the past few months or so. And now I would like to hand it over to Recreation Manager Nick Newkirk to begin our volunteer recognition event.
Thank you again, Mayor Sylvester. Our first group this evening is the Agora Hills Calabasas Joint Powers Authority Board Members. This is the Governing Board of Directors for the Agora Hills Calabasas Community Center, Jim Bukowski and Brad Rosenheim. The Architectural Review Panel assists the Community Development Department in reviewing new commercial and residential development applications for compliance with the city's architectural design standards and guidelines. Francisco Baer, Albert Croft, and Daniel Farkas. At this time, I'm going to ask Councilmember Klein Lopez to announce the CERT Team Member of the Year.
You got that? Okay. Great. Before I announce anything about CERT, I also want to make sure that everyone acknowledges that our Agora Hills Calabasas Community Center volunteers, Jim Bukowski and Brad Rosenheim, this will be the last, the last time they will come before us as a volunteer of the AHCCC, because as you know, the, the community center is now under the operations of the city of Calabasas, and Jim and Brad got us all through COVID during some really tough times. So if you don't mind, I would like to give an extra round of applause for the years of work that they put onto this, and thank you. And I'm very honored to move into CERT because especially recently with all of the fires and extreme weather events that we've been having, this is such an important, such an important group that volunteers their time for us. So with that, I would like to announce the CERT Team Member of the Year. This person worked a significant amount of hours, dedicated much of her time to CERT last year, and always had a smile on her face. She served on the CERT board and on the Reyes Adobe Days Executive Committee as the RAD Public Safety Coordinator. It is my pleasure to announce the CERT Team Member of the Year as Christine Mazdam, and Christine, please come up and accept a plaque.
Yes, I can move on into CERT now. CERT is a group trained to assist in the event of an emergency. This includes medical triage, traffic control, and care and shelter. They also provide first aid at community events. Greg Acevedo, Kirk Allegro, Kevin Austin, Danielle Blanc-Chaudry, Jennifer Buza, Dario Emanente, Audrey Fussell, Jim Fussell, Shirley Gu, Bob Hazard, Dana Hernandez, Patricia Higgins, Rob Jones, Norman Yum, Katia Lappens, Diane Lemoine, Christine Mazdam, Lee Magnoni, Anne Novick, Bill Novick, Mark Paris, Ann Russell, Justin Slaton, Sans Lawson, Paul Tedbillydio, Jeff Wachtel, Tony Wurtenbrock, and David Wing. At this point, I would like to ask Mayor Pro Tim Wolf to step down to the gift area to present the next few groups. The City Treasurer approves the city's investment of funds and also reviews the city's investment reporting, Ben Zhang. Our Class and Program Volunteers, this is a new category for this year. These volunteers offer a variety of classes to enhance our recreation program offerings to youth, teens, and seniors. Some classes and services include chess instruction, music, cartooning, seminars, and marketing materials. Joud Alquazi, Jerry Chang, Aditya Ram, Angeli Surish, Avery Yu, and Vanessa Zhao. The Community Concert Band Board. The concert band performs three times a year and proudly showcases nearly 50 members in the concert and jazz bands. The board advises staff on music selection and acts as a liaison to the band. Stephanie David, Brienne Foster, Robert Hackett, Derek Pova, Joseph Alex Reyes, and David Ubersacks. The Community Services Coalition is responsible for monitoring and actively addressing quality of life issues affecting this community such as senior services, emergency services, social, mental health issues, and transportation programs. Joyce Cordory and Sue LaPisto. The Community Service Days Committee assists staff in identifying projects, securing donations, recruiting volunteers, and overall implementation of this event. Ben Suber. At this point, I would like to ask Councilmember Anstad to step down to the gift area to present the next few groups. The Cultural Arts Council. The Arts Council advises the Department of Community Services on programs and activities as well as promotes arts and culture throughout the Agora Hills area. Tracy Burson, Deanna Glassberg, Priscilla Kromnick, Jennifer Miller, Elisa Spalding, Danielle Wallsmith, and Karen Kent. The Planning Commission acts in an advisory capacity to the City Council on legislative land use matters and makes decisions on new commercial and residential development applications. Kate Anderson, Jessica Reinhardt, Morgan Roth, Britt Sharon, and Bruce Stein. The Reyes Adobe Executive Committee. The committee plans and organizes all events within the Reyes Adobe Days celebration while the volunteers assist in implementing of these activities such as Senior Fiesta, Day at the Adobe, the RAD Parade, and the RAD Run. Ryan Arons, Missy Andrews, Bill Dooley, Deanna Glassberg, Jennifer Johnson, Michael Lang, Pete Lee, Christine Mazdam, Jennifer Miller, Randy Paller, Amanda Pullos, Jody Regan, Danielle Wallsmith, Gemma Wildermuth, and Jerry Wolf. At this point, I'd like to ask Councilmember Anderson to step down to the gift area to present the next few groups. The Senior Program Volunteers donate time and skills to facilitate and maintain some of the ongoing senior program activities. Mario Carone, Roberta Konstantin, Susan Cergo, Bruce Fleck, Marilyn Guild, Estelle Halsey, Deepak Mehta, Mark Mendenhall, Robert Norgel, and Pamela Still. Our Tax Preparation. This volunteer is trained by the IRS and the AARP and assists the community in doing their yearly taxes for free. Robert Harper. The Teen VIP Program is a year-round program in which teens earn service learning hours by doing volunteer work for the city, such as working at special events, camps, classes, and much more. Elise Alquazi, Kira Ahivi, Gattana Barbato, Natasha Bomaretti, Mariti Chadri, Matthew Lappin, Brian Levy-Goodwin, Savannah Metzner, Ava Stryker, Angelina Verievah, Francesca Whaley. They're all home doing homework. Our Tennis League Coordinator. This individual plans and implements the Men's Tennis League at Agora High School's tennis courts. Lawrence Linek. At this point, I'd like to ask Mayor Sylvester to step down to the gift area to present our final few groups. Our One City, One Book Committee. This committee promotes literature with representatives from the local community, Agora Hills Library, and the LVUSD that assist in planning the One City, One Book program. Nina Hull, Tina Johnson, Judy Carter, Karen Kent, Katie McGaha, Randy Paller, and Joan Yakavon. The Friends of the Agora Hills Library and the Board of Directors. The purpose of the Friends is to maintain and association to promote knowledge of the functions, resources, services, and needs of the Agora Hills Library, to assist in bringing to the library funds for special needs beyond the command of the library budget, to support educational and literary purposes, and to stimulate the gifts of books, magazines, desirable collections, endowments, and bequests to the library. This group also includes the Friends of the Library Board of Directors. I would like to call it first the Board and have them remain up as I call the rest of the Friends. Diane Haupt, Eric Haupt, Robin Hellerman, Judy Carter, Mike Richards, Rose Topless, and Joan Yakavon. And Kathy McBean. And the Friends of the Library, Steve Allen, Irma Baker, Cindy Berisi, Nancy Berg, Devin Braun, Susan Bukowski, Bobby Konstantin, Rosannick Correll, Gregory Cox, Joe DiMacrucio, Yujia Donatelli, Joni Fields, Billy Frankel, Wayne Gabaldon, Debbie Hoffman, Nikki Jaffe, Sharon Janis, Johan Lee, Pierre Lee, Bar Matas, Sam Mizili, Allison Merkel, Robert Muncher, Herb Obermann, Nina Olander, Betty Rohan, Phyllis Ruble, Michelle Schusmith, Natalie Speewack, Nate Speewack, Teresa Sutcliffe, Susan Suval, Susie Talinas, and Rose Topless.
The annual volunteer, is this on? Yes. The annual volunteer recognition event is the city's way of thanking the hundreds of volunteers for the many hours that they donated over the past year. This evening is just a small token of our heartfelt appreciation for all of your time and energy. It is people like you that make the city of Agora Hills a great place to live. From the bottom of our hearts, we thank you. Now, we are taking a moment to recognize a special person who sadly we recently lost. Joan Yakavon was a dedicated and loving member of our Agora Hills community and gave so much of her time and energy to the city. She was a city council member and served as mayor. She was a City Council member and served as mayor. She was a Planning Commissioner and served as vice chair for five terms. She served on the initial Planning Advisory Committee, and as you heard earlier, Joan continued to volunteer after her time on City Council by serving on the Agoura Hills Friends of the Library Board and on the One City, One Book Committee. At this time, I would like to invite a few friends who knew Joan best to come up and say a few words. Fran, would you like to start? Okay, Fran, and Ed Coridori, Darlene McBane, and Rick Haupt.
Yeah, he's asking Andy if -- Eric Haupt's asking if you're hiding. Anyone have a child that's had Mr. Pavly as their science teacher at Linderell Canyon Middle School a gazillion years ago? Okay, he's here. We're both here on behalf of Joan Yakavon. I think it's really fitting that she's being sort of memorialized this week, and tonight especially in City Hall next to the library, because that was so much a part of her life. I've known Joan for a little over 50 years, and she and her husband Tom and their three children were one of the first residents in Liberty Canyon, and one of the first homes that were built there. And that would be about, let's see, 50 years from me, so about close to 62 or so years ago, they moved into Liberty Canyon, one of the older areas. For those of you who don't know, it's in the city of Agoura Hills, but only part of it is. You have to be careful where you go. But Joan was able to put up a sign in the median strip last year, thanks to the city, that says Liberty Canyon, in case anyone forgets where that is. I'm going to talk a little bit about just sort of the early years, and then I think Ed's going to pick up, and Darlene, from when they know you. And we've all known her forever, so we all could have stories. I'll try to keep this relatively quick. During my times I've known her, she got really active in the homeowners association. Before we incorporated, that's where the action was, in the HOAs. There was only one city other than LA or Thousand Oaks in the area, and that was Hidden Hills, a gated community. There was not -- everything else was unincorporated. What does that mean? The Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors and anyone who votes on anything of substance, their meetings were on weekdays downtown Los Angeles. So it was hard to have a real big presence in making a difference in your own community. So Agoura Hills 50 years ago was quite different, right? Only Market was where the Canyon Club was. The bar in town, the Bear Cabaret with topless dancers was where Wood Ranch was. Some of you are nodding, Randy would. Were you ever there, Randy? No. And the post office was there. There was no Canaan Road and anything like that, so quite different times, but we got very busy. All the HOAs here were probably members of the Las Virginas Homeowners Federation, because that was collectively, we realized we had a lot more clout, if you will, and time to go to hearings and plot and plan on how to protect this larger Santa Monica Mountains area that we were so lucky to live in. This is a time when two beginning first-year teachers, Andy and I, could buy a home in Liberty Canyon.
It's tough now.
Together, Andy and I made almost $40,000, but the house, you will hate to hear this, was $37,000. My mother thought we were overspending. Anyway, we met Joan early on. She lived there about four or five years before we did. Very engaged from the beginning. Our homeowners association was involved, along with every other homeowners association around. Very engaged in land use planning. It was a way of life, whether it was streets or parks, but mostly development areas, because there was a lot of concerns and problems, and Joan was engaged. When she is engaged on a topic, she's very quiet and mild and effective, but don't make that misinterpret her for not being determined and seeing it through, because she almost always is successful. So she was involved in almost all the major land use battles in this area. For example, just a few. Might not have heard of the Abrams Project. That's today where the Wildlife Crossing is going, on south of Agoura Road. Three weeks before we incorporated in 1982, the Planning Commission at LA County had voted to approve 463-story apartments and 57 units covering that whole area. Other things were in plans across the freeway at Liberty Canyon, just -- and Joan was involved in all this, is where I'm going over this. There was going to be, right at Liberty Canyon 101, a huge furniture store. That had been approved by the county. Right next to that, between Liberty Canyon and Chesbro, north of the freeway, Orin Development, and I have all the track maps and everything else, if anyone wants the details and all the articles. That was going to be a huge commercial project, industrial project, shopping mall, 500 condominiums, and 1,000 houses between all that area. So the point is, activism paid off when we collectively worked together. Joan was either in front or behind the scenes, passing out petitions, showing up at those meetings downtown, but also gaining the respect of the decision-makers along the way, because she did not alienate people. She listened to people, she found common ground, and in many cases, we were successful. Joan was involved in the acquisitions over time, Paramount Ranch, Peter Strauss Ranch, King Gillette Ranch, Amundson Ranch, there's a theme here, and most recently, Cornerstone. Cornerstone was very important to her, right there on Cornell Road and Agoura Road, gateway to the Santa Monica Mountains. It was a tough fight, won through the court system, hate to go that route, but we did. And today, and this is where we have good fortune here, we are fortunate that if we end up perhaps fighting for open space, there's someone who can pay, acquire, and maintain it. The Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy owns almost all those properties. Some of it is also owned by the state parks or the national parks. None of those were around till 1980. Agoura Hills Incorporated in 82. Joan had the background and expertise when we incorporated in 82, and all of us who were involved in all the development issues and everything else were part of a bigger cityhood movement than what you see as the footprint of Agoura Hills today. It included all of Calabasas, all of Agoura Hills, so all of the area codes of 91301 and 91302, because it made sense to match our library and our water district and everything else, you know, not having your backyards and unincorporated areas. But because of political reasons, frankly, that was not to be. Westlake Incorporated by themselves, and in 82, we incorporated. Joan, who had a background in HOAs and our homeowners federation, got appointed automatically to our General Plan Advisory Committee. She was on some committees, I know with Darlene McBane, who can talk a little about those early committees, helped establish the very first general plan for the city of Agoura Hills, and she and Darlene were on the very first Planning Commission. Those must have been interesting times, and I'm sure you never got home till midnight or later in those days. We always went out to breakfast around 1:00 AM at Denny's or something. So Joan, those first 10 years, amazing, amazing difference. She ended up eventually by the 90s, moving up to the City Council level, but she never stopped caring about the city, our HOA, and the greater Santa Monica Mountains. And I should point out her other passions, if you didn't know them. UCLA. I don't mention, I'm the Schwarzenegger Institute USC, at USC around her, but we're told all wear blue and gold, especially with the UCLA women's basketball team, who she was a season ticket owner for, and went to their games up through the end of December. She would want us to wear blue and gold probably to her service and funeral. So it's with my great deal of pleasure and respect to say a few words on her behalf. She was an amazing role model, not only for myself, but for many of us who have gotten to know her over these past 50-plus years. Thank you.
I used to call Joan the Energizer Bunny, because she was so active. She was doing things all the time. I was, my first year on the City Council, she was mayor. And I recall, it was a difficult time back then. The city was strapped for cash, and we were struggling to find ways to have a successful city, have a successful financial basis. And so we had long contentious meetings, and I recall, after one meeting, we were all exhausted, and I was chatting with Joan, and she said, "Well, I gotta go, I got a bowling match to go to." It's like, and that's, or it was a basketball game, I remember, but it was, she was extremely active. What impressed me the most was the way she treated people. Joan had a genuine love of people, and she treated everyone with a great deal of respect, even people who were, let's say vociferous, came to the council and made personal accusations and raised their voice. She always treated them respectfully, allowed them to have their say, and moved on. It was a great learning time for me as a first-time elected person on the council. We, this city will miss her greatly.
Well, you've heard some of these things before, Fran, and Ed took some of my talk. Any rate, I've known Joan for over approximately 40 years. We worked together on the Hillside, Oak Tree, and General Plan Committees. We also served on the first Planning Commission, the City Council, and the Friends of the Library Board. Joan was intelligent, asked pertinent questions, and was able to make decisions. She was one of the pioneers for the new city of Agoura Hills and helped set the city on the right path. And you can read about all of Joan's other activities for the city in the last issue of The Acorn. They did quite a nice article on her. But there was another side to her. She was a wife, a mother, and a grandmother. She enjoyed being with her sisters and family at the family compound in Wisconsin, and she even brought cheese home for some of us to enjoy. She was a nurse at UCLA Medical Center, and upon her retirement, she began to usher Bruin Games at the Rose Bowl. She was even more an enthusiastic basketball fan. She ushered the UCLA Games, and when she was through ushering, she became a very enthusiastic fan. I don't think she ever missed a home game. She was religious, and her faith showed through her actions. She was patient, humble, and I never heard her raise her voice to anyone. She was a lady of many talents, and we will miss her.
Thank you, Darlene. Good evening, everybody. Senator Pavly, honorable members of City Council. Yes, certainly, of course. Do you miss it?
I don't miss it right now.
She doesn't miss it right now. Anyways, I'm Eric Haupt. I'm the Vice President and Treasurer of the Friends of Agoura Hills Library. The city of Agoura Hills and the local community have lost a very special lady. Joan Yakavon was the president of the Friends and implant holder of the Board since 1992. Joan was not only a very dear friend, but a wonderful and great asset to the community. She will be sorely missed. Joan, smooth sailing and following seas. Please join me. A few moments of silence in memory of Joan. Thank you. Joan, peace be with you.
Thank you so much for those beautiful memories. Would any members of the Board like to speak?
Thank you. I have not known Joan for 60 years, like some of you in the room. I've known her for, oh, maybe 10, 15 years, and Joan was a true environmentalist through and through. I mean, I think if anybody would have chained themselves to the oak trees on Agoura Road, it would have been Joan. She loved these mountains, down to every individual tree. As you heard, you know, she also was a very important part of our city. Her picture's up there on the wall as mayor and Planning Commissioner. She was also a very, very important player in the Las Virginas Homeowners Federation, which is a group that really advocated for the homeowners and the properties in the Santa Monica Mountains. And even though Liberty Canyon, you know, was part of Agoura Hills, she was very involved in that organization with, she lost the, we also lost Kim Lamori in that organization, and it's a huge loss for that group, because they've done such amazing work to protect our beloved mountains, and I just wanted to make sure everyone knew she was very involved in that as well, as well as Friends of the Library. She was Agoura Hills, Agoura really, she moved here before it was the Hills, and the Santa Monica Mountains through and through. And as you heard from our speakers, you know, she walked softly but carried a big stick. So we would be talking about things, and she usually came in a little late, I don't know if you remember that, but she would come in a little after the conversation would started, and it put a shutter down our backs. I mean, she was tough. When Joan walked in, you knew you were going to have a spirited discussion. She really fought hard for what she loved for, and we loved her for that. So it just doesn't feel right not to have her here tonight. She would be moseying in and be enjoying this evening, and I'm glad this is where we're honoring her. I know she's having a service this weekend. I wish I could be there. I'm going to be out of town, so I just want to say it here publicly that I extend my condolences to her family, who she loved so much, and her friends and her community, and we will miss her. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, those who came and spoke. I learned not only a lot about Joan, but a lot about Agoura Hills. And any community is the essence of the folks who built it, and it is so clear that the community of Agoura Hills is Joan's essence, that she epitomizes who we are as this small town, she epitomizes who we are as a city. She is, I am with you in the quiet and supportive voice, but also, like you could tell, there was a backbone there that you didn't want to cross. And clearly, like, you know, Fran, you listed off all of these things that had been approved. I want to hear the story of how it was that Joan got those things stopped. I mean, that's just an amazing, amazing force. I feel really, really grateful as a City Council member to be a part of a city and continuing her legacy. And I want to say, echoing what Councilmember Klein Lopez talked about, the Wildlife Bridge. I kept running into her at that Wildlife Bridge event. She was a huge champion of that, so that's also something else that I am excited to honor her legacy by continuing. So that's also something else that I am excited to honor her legacy by continuing to support. And thank you to her friends and her family for, because this, this work must have taken a lot of time. So for your willingness to sacrifice her time to be able to dedicate it to the city.
Thank you.
Okay, so I, I, I mean, I have a lot of emotion here with Joan. I've known her at least 10 years and knew her during that time fairly well. And the way that I describe her the last 10 years is she's a spitfire. Joan, Joan was adamant on her positions, and she would not back down whenever she had a position. And, and a good example is the Liberty Canyon sign. There, we, we worked numerous times. She came into the meetings and discussed how we can try to make this sign work with the city. And, because there was a lot of issues with trying to create that sign. And, but she was very adamant because Joan always was, I mean, the last, the time that I've known her, she's always been a huge advocate for Liberty Canyon and, and make sure that, that Liberty Canyon issues were taken care of by the city council. And, and so we really went back and forth with the sign, but we finally came to some resolution to be able to make everybody happy in order to make that, that sign happen. So I'm glad that that happened. The other thing I do remember about Joan as well, on the spitfire thing, is she used to talk all the time about volunteering at UCLA and the, and the basketball games. And, and so she was a true UCLA fan, that she would love to go to those games. I also saw her actually many times. She would be watching the games on the TV. If she couldn't get it at her house, she'd be over at the sports bar here in Cronies watching the UCLA game and cheering them on like she was 20 years old. So she was very into the UCLA. So I, I could see wearing the colors at her memorial. So I'll always remember her that way, and she just was full of life. I think that's the other way I describe her. Every time I would meet with her, she's always very animated and energetic. And, so I think, and she loved life, loved living life. So I think those are the things that I, that I take away, and I, I really will miss her. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I am so devastated about losing Joan and such a loss to the city of Agoura Hills. I've known Joan for a little bit, over 14 years, when I first started to get involved in, in Agoura issues. And I also served with her on the Future Foundation, which she was very active in. And Joan was a mentor, a friend, a guiding light, and a true champion to the city, especially her beloved Liberty Canyon, a place that she and we all love so deeply. She instilled in me and so many others a profound sense of pride in our community, reminding us the importance of preserving our history, protecting our open space, and fostering the spirit of connection that makes our community so unique. Her passion was contagious, her wisdom invaluable, and her kindness unwavering. She believed in our city and the people who call it home. As we spent some time here tonight reflecting on her life and her legacy, I hope that we can carry forward her dedication for the, her dedication and love for Agoura Hills, ensuring that her vision continues to inspire future generations. So Joan, I want to thank you for everything you've done for the city, for me, for our community, for our region, for the Santa Monica Mountains. You will be deeply, deeply missed but not forgotten here in our community.
Thank you. Well, others have spoken much more eloquently than I can about Joan's many accomplishments and contributions to our city. I was honored to have known her, and I know that we will not mourn her passing, but celebrate everything she gave to us. So thank you, Joan. And now, now we'll take a deep breath. If anybody who came for volunteers would like to leave, you may do so now. We are now going to move on to our Intergovernmental Special Purpose Committee and Departmental Reports. And we are going to start, I'd like to introduce Southern California Edison's Government Relations Manager, Adrian Garcia.
Good evening, members of the city council, mayor, city staff. My name is Adrian Garcia. I came to introduce myself formally as your new liaison on behalf of Southern California Edison. I'm here to serve as a bridge between SCE and your city team, as well as your leadership, ensuring that your voices are heard and your needs are addressed. My goal is to support the city administration and the city in any way that I can, whether it's facilitating communication, researching important issues, or working together to find solutions that benefit your community. I'm eager to learn from your experiences, understand your priorities, and work alongside issues of mutual importance. I have sent you an email earlier last week with my contact. Please, if you want to share with me any issues, questions that you may have that, that I can address, I will do my best to get you a response. If you just want to call and chat, talk about utility matters, please feel free. And I'm here to also, you know, I have, I have an open door too, so, and I hope it's mutual, and that we can have this good working relationship moving forward. And I, I know last month has not been easy for the region. We ourselves are learning as well from the episode of, of January's events, and, but we are also here also to listen to your questions and your issues to the best, and we'll get to respond as quickly as we can. With that, thank you very much. I'm here to answer any questions, inquiries, you know, feel free.
Hi there. I also wanted to introduce myself. My name is Joshua Torres. I'm the Principal Manager of Government Relations for this part of Los Angeles County. Adrian's part of my team, and I just wanted to come and introduce myself to the council as well.
Thank you so much. Let me open it up.
Thank you for being here tonight. We were hoping to see you last month. I know it was, it was a little bit crazy. And I first want to thank Adrian for meeting with me last week. I took him up on his offer to come out to Agoura Hills and meet up for coffee. We had a very productive conversation, I believe, where I was able to share what our residents were, were feeling. And I just want to reiterate here publicly from the dais that, you know, we, we very much understand that last month's events were unprecedented and really stretched your organization, our organization, our first responders to the extreme maximums. And so, you know, we recognize that it's, it really was not a typical event. However, we had, we, we were hit with quite long periods of power safety shut offs and public safety power shut offs. And this is where the communication really broke down. We could not get to you, our, our staff couldn't get to you, and our residents were, were without power for days and days with no understanding of, of what was happening. So I talked through that a lot with, with Adrian. We really just, we understand why the power goes out, we just need information. We have people who lost a lot of food, we have people who lost medicines, we have, we have an aging population here where they, you know, were worried they were going to have to evacuate, and they didn't have power to, to, to receive those communications. So it was really, as they say, a perfect storm. The other thing that Adrian and I spoke about in addition to the communications piece was the, the liability piece. Our residents, we understand that Edison will, will turn off power so that the lines don't snap or, or, you know, a frond falls on them and sparks. But the, the, by, in doing so, you're protecting your liability, but the liability is then shifted onto your customers. So we have lights out that, you know, causes safe traffic, we have spoilage, we have a lot of liability that then gets put on the city and on our customers. So we talked about that, and I just ask you to take that back to your team. I know that's kind of beyond all of our pay grades, but we need you to take that back to, to your team because really is a burden for residents who are on fixed incomes, who are, you know, paycheck to paycheck. All of those things kind of add up, and, and I want to thank you for listening to me, and, and I ask that you bring that back to your, to your team for, so that we're ready for the next time. The last thing I'll say, again, and this, this goes to the communications piece, you had the support centers that popped up in, in Calabasas. The hours were not consistent, they were really hard to find, ran out of kits, ran out of gift cards. So I just want to say, I hope that's another place where you can improve some of the assistance that you're, you're giving to your residents, because I never got that information officially. I only found out about it from social media and, you know, messages that I got. It didn't come through our city channels, and so I couldn't promote it. And even if I could, it, it seemed to be really inconsistent. So like I said, we had this conversation, but I wanted to say it publicly from the dais so that you know that we're expecting you to come back to us with hopefully some, some answers and some improvements on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council, yes?
Thank you guys so much for being here. I really appreciate it. And none of this is directed towards you personally, and I understand as Councilmember Klein Lopez, the scope of what we went through was unprecedented, all the things. And I also understand that we're not unique here in Agoura Hills in the SCE service area of what went on. But just to give a little understanding, there's areas of the city, and a lot of them were just talked about, that rely on power for any form of communication. And without power, they are in the dark, literally, figuratively. And so they don't, there's no way for them to get emergency notifications, and so that creates another, another hazard. And we talk about moving, moving the liability. And the lack of communication, again, I know there was a thousand things going on. It's a complex system, but our city should have been able to get in contact with someone, even if it's, it's just city manager to a staff member, you know, not every council member reaching out. So that line of communication for the next issue needs to be, we need to work on that so that there, there's a clear line of communication our city manager can, can get in contact. And then the third thing that Councilmember Klein Lopez did mention was the relief center. I found out about it, I went to it, but I didn't want to promote it because I didn't trust that it would still be open. And as a utility, you want to be able to trust that this will, there'll be consistent hours, and we know that there'll be consistent supplies. I understand that there was flooded with people coming in, and again, it's unprecedented times, but I think these are things that we can work on together. So I appreciate you being here. But we, there was a lot of frustration in the community, and I'm sure you're getting it from every angle, and we're not unique in that, that sense. But I just want to, on the, on the record, say that, and I look forward to working with you guys.
Anyone else? Yes.
I think the biggest issue that I had or that I have is concerning the cell towers because if our residents can't get notified of the emergency, that that's the biggest issue. And I know what I've been told is that a lot of the cell towers had like one-day backup batteries, and then basically they went down. And so by the second day, the cell towers were out in certain areas, and a lot of people didn't get their emergency notices. And, and so I think that's, that's a big issue that I hope that you're working with the cell companies on. And I, and I don't know if there's any explanation you have for our residents concerning that, but I know that was definitely one of the biggest issues that was brought to my attention.
Thank you. I echo everything my fellow council members have said, and we're not angry at you, but there were a lot of angry people in our community because they felt betrayed and let down and abandoned, actually. And also, when you open those centers for some residents to come and get the gift cards, what about all the residents that didn't know about it? Are you going to be giving everybody a credit? This is a question. Is everyone going to get that? I believe it was a $50 gift card, am I correct? So shouldn't we, what we would like to see is that all our residents have that $50 credit put onto their bills, because a lot of people knew nothing about it. And it's not fair that just because you happen to drive by and see it, you got it, and the others didn't. So that would be a request that I would like to put in to Edison. But we look forward to working with you. You know, there's a lot we can do in the future, and we will be working closely with you. So thank you for being here tonight.
Of course, of course.
Okay. We will now move on to, I'm going to defer to Councilmember Klein Lopez for a report from the Clean Power Alliance.
Thank you. Just a few updates from the Clean Power Alliance world. Our, our team went up to Sacramento last month for Lobby Day. We do that once, once a year to meet with state representatives, with the governor's office. I could not join the team this year for personal reasons, but we had a good showing, and, you know, the goal is to ensure that the legislature is thinking about community choice aggregates and clean energy as they, as they put forward their bills for the year. Also want to mention that, as you know, there are two parts to your, to your electric bill. I say this a lot, but there's the generation side, and there's the delivery side. And Edison, sorry, they left, is in charge of the delivery lines, the actual lines that come to our house. And their rates have gone up so much on the generation side that I just wanted the public to know that we actually reduced our rates in Clean Power Lines mid-year, which we don't usually do. We usually set rates for a whole year, but we reduced our rates from March through June so that we could stay competitive and really not shock our customers into having, you know, higher-than-normal bills. So we will do our normal budgeting, rate-setting in the, in the summer, but I wanted to make sure that the public knew that, you know, we are not a for-profit agency. We care very much about the stability of our rates, and so we did cut rates for the next four months. And finally, I'm going to leave a couple of these with the city. I would love to have it on the front table. It is our 2024 Impact Report, and there's a lot of great numbers in here. I will tell you just one of them. Our Clean Power Lines customers helped avoid over $4 billion pounds of GHG emissions just in 2024 alone. So it's actually a really nice read. It's very clean and easy to read, and I'll leave a couple copies. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any reports from staff? No, no reports? Ms. Brink, do you not wish to give us a report on the Film Festival? Or is that coming later?
We can do it at the end of the meeting, if that's okay.
Okay, great. Any reports from city council? No? All right. Well, actually, I do have a report. I attended the virtual town hall meeting concerning the Calabasas landfill debris deposits that are coming. It was moderated by Supervisor Horvath's Field Deputy, Daniel Vicente. He was here earlier, but he had to leave to go to Calabasas. On the town hall were the representatives of the US Army Corps of Engineers, LA County Sanitation, LA County Public Health, and the Calabasas landfill. They discussed, there are two phases, and this is for our general public, I hope are watching. Phase one is the household hazardous materials. Those will be identified by the Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA, and they will be taken to facility, facilities certified to manage the material. None of that material is coming to the Calabasas landfill. Household hazardous materials are materials that may pose a threat to human health, animals, and the environment, such as batteries, herbicide, pesticide, propane tanks, asbestos, siding, and paint. Now, once that phase one is complete, then they move on to phase two, and phase two has begun, and trucks have started moving into our area now to deposit at the landfill. So phase two begins with the removal of structural debris, foundations, hazardous trees, and contaminated soil and ash. Those materials are not coming to Calabasas. Those will be going elsewhere. As part of phase two, the US Army Corps of Engineers, engineers will look for and remove any household hazardous materials that were missed during the phase one cleanup process. Sometimes, sometimes there is some sort of hazard on site that prevents the EPA from conducting phase one removal, such as unstable walls and trees, et cetera. So in phase two, they go in and they remove all of that material, which again, is not coming to Calabasas. And then after that, they are left with the ash debris. The ash debris will be regularly spot-tested for asbestos, and if asbestos is fine, it will be separated out for disposal elsewhere. It is not coming to the Calabasas landfill. Calabasas is, landfill is already designated as a Class III facility. This means it can receive burned residential debris. The ash debris will be sprayed at the site of origin and encased in government-regulated plastic sheeting before being loaded onto trucks. When it arrives at the landfill, it is When it arrives at the landfill, it is sprayed again, and is offloaded and is covered every night. The Calabasas landfill is equipped with the appropriate environmental controls to accept the fire debris. It has historically accepted fire debris such as it did for the Woolsey Fire. The landfill has a composite liner to protect groundwater. Liquids are collected as they percolate through the trash, and the air quality is monitored by the Air Quality Management District. Wells around the site are also regularly tested. The Calabasas landfill does not accept hazardous materials. I would like to clarify that the landfill area being used is not on the west side of the landfill, which is nearest to Agora Hills. That portion of the landfill does not have a protective liner, and so it will not be affected. The ash waste is being transported by special waste disposal trucks that are certified by the state for this kind of transport, with drivers certified for heavy equipment. They are not regular trash trucks. The Army Corps of Engineers will be monitoring the trucks. The federal program has oversight requirements for transport. The goal is to speed up the timeframe of cleaning up the burn area of the Palisades Fire. There is no ash debris coming to the Calabasas landfill from the Eaton Fire in the Pasadena area. So for the sake of expediency, because they want to try and complete all of this in one year, they're going to be doing the following. Trucks will be working six days a week using the freeways and our local canyon roads. The Calabasas landfill hours are being extended by two hours each day. The new hours are from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The Calabasas landfill is increasing from one to three the onsite inspectors. A waiver has been issued to increase daily deposits from the current maximum of 3,500 tons per day with a waiver to allow 5,000 tons per day. This will not change the total amount of waste deposited in the landfill. It will only shorten the window. So I hope we've been able to give our residents some clarification. All of our cities are closely monitoring this, as are our local electeds. And, you know, nothing is guaranteed, but everybody is going to be watching it. They're going to be monitoring all the output. And I want to make sure that especially in Old Agora, our residents know that it's not being deposited on the west side of the landfill. So with that, we will move on. And we're now opening up our public comments. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items not listed on the agenda that are under the subject-mattered jurisdiction of the City Council. If you have something to distribute to the City Council, please do not approach the dais. Hand your item to the city clerk, and she will distribute to us on your behalf. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons addressing the City Council shall not engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. I will now defer to the city clerk.
Thank you. We received two written public comments that were distributed to the council from Rachel Spalding, Agora Hills, and Jess Thomas, Old Agora. And we do have one public speaker, Jody Reagan.
Hi, thank you.
I think you know the rules, but I'm just going to go through them. You have three minutes to speak, ending when the red light appears on the podium. Please adjust the microphone.
Thank you. My name is Jody Reagan, and I'm here to promote the Nature Made Great Race. This community event takes place through Oak Park and Agora Hills. As you may know, the Great Race is actually six races: a half marathon, a 15K, a 10K, a 5K, and a one-miler, and a 10.3-mile triple challenge. There's something for everybody. I am pleased to say this is our 40th year of this event, and the 40th year of this event supporting the schools in Oak Park and Agora Hills. More than $1.7 million has been donated so far, and our newest community partner is Food Share. We've been donating to them since 2020. The race brings thousands of people to this area, not just runners, and they come from all over. They stay and shop and eat locally. Each race ends at the finish line at a giant expo at Schumash Park, and this has consistently been voted the best post-race party. But this huge event could not possibly take place without almost 500 spots being filled by over 300 volunteers. Water stations, course monitors to help the runners stay safe, cleanup, packet pickup, these are just a few of the choices of volunteer positions needed to be filled. And our volunteers have fun when they're doing this work. They love it. So I'm currently signing up volunteers for Race Day, which this year is Saturday, April 5. But we also need volunteers for prep work on April 2, 3, and 4. We have shifts in the morning. We have shifts in the afternoon, and the kids can do the ones in the afternoon. We're looking for teens and adults. Teens earn community service hours for school. Each volunteer receives a free T-shirt to wear while volunteering, and then they get to keep forever. You can volunteer on your own, with a family, a friend, or with a group. Some of the many groups we have volunteering this year are Farmers Insurance, Team Bank of America, Boys and Girls Clubs of Canaer Valley, Rotary Next Gen 40, many student sports teams and clubs like the National Honors Society of Oak Park and Calabasas Highs, Agora Highs Key Club, and we just got CASMA, is joining us this year, Westlake High Spanish Honors Class TO High School's wrestling team. Many volunteers return every year because it's fun. It's a great annual reunion, and the teens who ran as children are now old enough to volunteer. So I'd like to invite the Agora Hills City Council and our entire community to volunteer. There's many spots that might be right outside your front door in Old Agora, in Oak Park, or in the Fountainwood neighborhood of Sumac. To volunteer, you can go directly to the volunteer website. It's thegreatrace.volunteerlocal.com. That's thegreatrace.volunteerlocal.com. And my contact information's on there. If you're inclined to run, great. That is, website is greatrace-run. I also have flyers, and I hope to see you on April 5. And I have a shirt and bag for our newest council member because... Good, she's coming to me because I'm not allowed to go to her, right? So we got this. Enjoy. And I just put it in my calendar. I'm 100% volunteering. Thank you. And also a bag. Oh, that's so great. You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you all. Hope to see you there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. We're now moving on to the council consent calendar. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items on the consent calendar. I will now defer to the city clerk.
Thank you. We did not receive any written public comments, nor do we have any public speaker cards.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the City Council on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will now call for a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar. Will the maker of the motion and second state your names?
This is City Councilman Chris Anstead. I make the motion to adopt the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
Councilmember Anderson, seconds.
I will now defer to city clerk for the roll call vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Anstead?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you. Now we will move on to a continued item, a discussion action. Our next item was continued from the January 22 meeting and is a discussion regarding the Community Wildlife Risk Assessment, also known as CWRA, and consideration of approval of the revised CWRA community survey questions. I will now defer to Deputy City Manager Louis Selaya for the staff presentation.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sylvester, members of the council. At your January 22 meeting, the City Council received a report regarding the process to prepare the city's Community Wildfire Risk Assessment Community Survey. At that meeting, the council elected to return their survey to the Law Enforcement, Fire, and Emergency Response Subcommittee for further review in light of the recent fires that occurred. City staff and Jensen Hughes met with the Subcommittee on January 23 and revisited the survey questions. Revisions were made to several questions, which included moving some of the several demographic questions to the end of the survey and placing the wildfire and wildfire experience-related questions prominently at the beginning. We also modified questions related to the Woolsey Fire and converted them to more general wildfire experience questions. There was also modifications to some of the questions to be conditional logic based on therefore moving the survey taker forward to other relevant questions where a response of no was given. This was done to reduce survey fatigue. There's also eliminating of several responses in some of the questions, again, to reduce survey fatigue. And there was also input received from the Agora Hills Fire Safe Council. As mentioned in your January 22, 2025 report, Jensen Hughes would utilize Survey Monkey to complete the community survey task with the survey posted on the city's dedicated CWRA webpage. And the Jensen team will work with the city's communications manager to begin outreach to promote participation. Additional recommendations were also made for outreach efforts, which will be undertaken by staff and Jensen Hughes. This evening, we would like to solicit comments from the council and finalize the questions to move forward with releasing the survey. Jensen Hughes would like to survey to run for a minimum of one month. As noted in the prior staff report, there will be broader community stakeholder outreach to other groups that will also take place. The results of the community survey will be shared at a future community meeting that will be scheduled. This concludes my report, and myself along with Amelia Pluto from Jensen Hughes and members of the Subcommittee are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So before I open it up for comments or questions from the council, I would just like to begin because Councilmember Klein Lopez and I are on the Subcommittee. I would like to thank the Fire Safe Community, Peter Feller, and Jay Crutcher, who's with us this evening, for participating and helping us fine hone the questions that are going to be asked on the survey. We're now ready to have all your input, criticism, or approval as we go forward. But I feel very comfortable with the survey questions.
Yeah, I will just add that it was a very, very collaborative and spirited meeting that we had at the Subcommittee level. It was a good conversation between council staff, Jensen Hughes, and then, of course, we had Jay Crutcher and Peter Feller there from the Agora Hills Fire Safe Council. And we really hammered out every question one at a time, you know. And they may or may not be perfect. We encourage your thoughts and response, but just want you to know that they were very well thought out from a bunch of different points of views, and hope we got it right, and willing to hear if we didn't.
Thank you. Any questions from council members? No?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
Is there a way to include somewhere in the survey, maybe at the end, an option for folks to provide email addresses to opt in to our notifications?
Well, I believe, is this going out? How are we sending the survey out?
The survey will be done through, we will utilize our social media. It'll be on the webpage. We will start to promote it with a link to, it'll actually be just click on the link, and the survey will begin. We're going to, it was recommended that we also maybe put some printed copies kind of in our senior areas, as well as utilizing, I think I have in my notes, some of the school district abilities, just get that out, and then maybe through their PCs to kind of get people to the link, and they can then go in and start the survey.
So my question then stands that if we print it, or if it's online, if someone clicks on the link, could there be a question saying, do you want to opt in to City of Agora Hills emergency notifications? If yes, here's my email address. And then if it's printed, if yes, write down your email address.
I'm going to defer to Jensen Hughes. We can probably do that. Correct, Amelia?
Yeah. So I think we can definitely, and we've done this in previous similar surveys, have a way to gather email addresses. I'm not, it's often not the easiest way to do it through like a Survey Monkey question directly, but I think we could have, on the final page of the survey, there's a more information visit, and I think we could have a link there that sends you to a place to put in your email and capture it more.
Yeah, I think like at the end of it, yeah. And even if it sends you, if it's not the survey even, like it could be, yeah, sorry, I'm mumbling.
Yeah, so there would be a link to register your email address.
Yes, something like that.
That would be wonderful. Thank you. Great suggestion. And any other?
Well, your great suggestion, and Louis, your response to it made me think of another just idea. So one of the things that happens in the county when we have things that go out to the public is we have folks who then help folks who have trouble with technology actually like doing it. And in our community events earlier, I was talking to some seniors who are very involved and engaged. And it made me think about how many seniors and others we have coming to the community center. So I know that we probably don't have the staff capacity, but I wonder if through CERT or the Firewise Council, we could just have some laptops set up for folks so that when they're coming to the event center, they could then fill it out.
I'm sure that's something we can do.
Good ideas. Okay. Any other input? Thank you. All right. So now we will move on to public comment, correct? Do we have any speakers?
We did receive one written comment from Jay Crutcher, Agora Hills, representing the Agora Hills Fire Safe Council. And Jay is also here to speak tonight.
Welcome, Jay. You will have three minutes to speak, ending when the red light appears on the podium. Please.
Madam Mayor, esteemed City Council members, city staff, my name is Jay Crutcher. I'm with the Agora Hills Fire Safe Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight in support of the proposed survey that is part of the larger Community Wildfire Risk Assessment by Jensen Hughes. In particular, I want to thank Mayor Sylvester and Councilmember Klein Lopez for their diligence, concern, and sense of urgency in rewriting and vastly improving the survey that now focuses much less on the 2018 Woolsey Fire, and that now looks for more insights into actionable next steps that can augment safety and resilience in our community. As the City Council and city staff both look for opportunities to bolster safety and resiliency, it's worth noting that while this is the fifth time this current group of council members has met, it's the first time you've met not under a red flag warning for fire danger. And I'm not counting the emergency declaration that was just terminated. It's also worth noting, last week, Governor Newsom signed an executive order that now expedites science-based legislative mandates on CAL FIRE that will have significant impacts on our community, indeed, all of California. I believe, but cannot prove this counterfactual, that these legislative packages were unwisely slow-walked years ago and would have prevented tragedy in Pacific Palisades and Altadena if they had been implemented with urgency. Assembly Bill 3074 passed the State Senate 37 to 0 and the Assembly 72 to 0 in August 2020. It required CAL FIRE to issue no later than January 2023 enforceable regulations for Zone Zero to remove combustible material in the first five feet surrounding structures in high-risk areas. Senate Bill 63 passed the State Senate 73 to 0 and the Assembly, oh, sorry, 37 to 0 and the Assembly 73 to 0 in September 21. It required CAL FIRE to issue updated fire hazard severity zone maps expected no later than the spring of 2023. And these maps would add high and moderate severities at the individual parcel level where no hazard severity was previously assessed. The science is there. The threat to life and property is here. Please do everything in your power to be effective leaders, communicators, and project managers for this survey and all related critical efforts to improve public safety and wildfire resilience in our community. Thank you.
Okay. Do any council members have any further questions? Seeing none, we'll now move on to deliberations. Councilmember Anstead, would you like to start?
I actually was originally on the Subcommittee before the fire and just on the Woolsey information. And I liked the updated survey that I see that incorporates to not just the Woolsey Fire, all fires that we've had. And I think there's a lot of great questions in here concerning communications, also whether people have hardened their homes and whether they plan to. And so I think there's a lot of good questions in here and information that'll be great for us to have going forward, and then maybe try to make some improvements after we get the survey back. So I think it's, I'm happy with the way the survey is now. I'm ready to move forward.
Thank you. Move across. Councilmember Anderson?
I will echo my councilmember gratitude to Councilmember Klein Lopez and Mayor Sylvester for the time and effort that you put into this, and gratitude to Jay and your partner in crime, Peter, for the work that you put into this, and to our consultants and to Louis for going back and really working this. I'm happy. I love what we have, and I'm really interested in what comes next.
Lovely. Councilmember Wolf?
Thank you. I'm happy with how this looks. The first, what was brought to us at the last council meeting, I thought could have used some updates. And everything that, I'm happy with where it is now. And the timing of the Palisades fires was unfortunate, but it was interesting. And I think it worked strangely to our benefit.
strangely to our benefit for the information we're trying to get from our residents, so I am eager to move forward with this and eager to see the results. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Thank you. You put it very well, Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Wolf. It was very timely, not that, we were reviewing this right around the time of the Eaton and the Palisades Fire, so that we could take a step back and understand that while Woolsey hit us very hard, this is more about Woolsey. I mean, just in the past quarter, we've had the Mountain Fire, the Broad Fire, the Franklin Fire, Palisades Fire, and then, of course, Eaton Fire. These are just, sorry? And Kenneth Fire, exactly. So it's a year-round fire season, and I think it was a smart move to, you know, take a little bit of a step back and look at it more holistically. And then I will say to Jay Crutcher's comments, as we were devouring the news about these two huge fires that we had in January, or two, more than two, but the two major ones, it does seem to be that the zero-to-five zone of keeping your vegetation away from your house is the single biggest thing that all of us can do easily. That's not a lot of money and really protect our house, so I think that it's very important, it's very timely. I'm glad that the survey is going to be going out soon, because I think we will get a lot of response due to what we've just been through, and again, I just want to thank everyone for their input.
Thank you. Well, I agree with all my fellow council members, and since I was on the subcommittee, I'm very happy with all the questions. So I will now call for a motion and a second.
Mayor, can I also add?
Yes.
That I also very much appreciate your suggestion, Mayor Protem Wolf, and I think it's a little bit hard for us to sign people up for emergencies because we don't know what they prefer. Sometimes it's text, sometimes it's email, sometimes it's both, so I think the addition of having that link to our Code Red or whatever the website is that we send people to, to do the initial signup, is a brilliant thing to add on the end, so thank you for bringing that up. Sorry to interrupt you, but I just wanted to say that.
So I will now call for an emotion and a second to approve the survey questions for the Community Wildlife Risk Assessment Survey with the addition of the link to the emails for participants. And do we want to add a cell phone contact number as well then to that, and they have the option of doing either?
What, we link it to, and then they decide?
Yeah, but what I'm saying is when they go to that link.
When it goes to Code Red, each resident can put in the information, how they want to receive it.
Whatever they want, lovely.
Cell phone, email, they make that decision.
Great, so that's all included, so we're going to call for a motion on that with that amendment, that additional link. Thank you.
I will make that motion. Deborah Klein Lopez.
Chris Anstead, or City Councilman Chris Anstead will second.
Great, I will defer to the city clerk for the roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Anstead?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to comments from the staff. Ms. Brink, would you like to start?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Sylvester, and good evening, city council. My microphone falls apart. So last year, last week, we had the pleasure of attending the Ladyface Mountain Film Festival that took place in Agora Hills from Thursday through Saturday. I will say that Mayor Sylvester was a trooper. She was there the minute that that film festival kicked off on Thursday, and she was practically the last one to leave on Saturday night, so thank you for your enthusiasm and your support of the event. And Councilmember Klein Lopez came out, Councilmember Anderson was there. We missed you too, but that's okay. It was a great, it was a great time for Agora Hills. It was a three, it was a three-day festival. We spent time seeing some amazing documentaries. I want to give a kudos and a congratulations to Joe Litzinger and Ally E. Rush. Joe Litzinger approached me about a year ago to the day about hosting a documentary film festival. He called me and said, "What do you think?" I said, "I'm not sure. Let's talk about it," and here we are a year later. It was an amazing three days. You know, we had hundreds of people coming throughout the three days. The dinners were fabulous, the restaurants were packed over at Wizens. We actually took the opportunity to say goodbye to the Agora Regency. It was a little bit bittersweet, having these amazing filmmakers and producers and writers and actors that we were able to interview and chat with. It was a really good three days for the arts in Agora Hills, and I think that the residents really loved it. The Cultural Arts Council is buzzing and can't wait until next year, so hats off to Joe and Ally, and again to the council for your support. I don't think we realize, it's a little funny, because about 12 years ago, when the city council created the Cultural Arts Council, one of the, one of the goals, literally, one of the five goals that they put down was to start a short documentary film festival in Agora Hills, and here we are, 12 years later, we did. Took us 12 years, but we did it. So thank you for your support. It was a great weekend, and I'm hoping that Mayor Sylvester will fill in some of the holes on how great the event was.
I will in a minute, but I'll see. Any other staff reports first? No? Any other city council members like to report anything?
I have a question. Are we, is it planned on that they're going to be doing it again next year, or is that... Oh, sorry, sorry.
You jumped the gun. So first of all, I think what was so amazing, I don't think the audience realized that they were going to be able to interact with the filmmakers, because all the documentary filmmakers were there, and they, not only were they there for the day that their film showed, they were there for the whole three days. So you really got to sit down and talk to them and get, you know, more information about their projects and what they're going to do next. So it was, it was a very intimate festival in that sense, so you weren't just in the audience, you were involved in the whole three days of the festival, and everybody came up to me and said, "You've got to do this again," you know? So yes, what we are hoping to do, since we're losing the Regency, is we have a beautiful performing arts center at the high school, and we are going to be just talking to, we've already started talking to the Los Fergus Unified School District, and they are obviously very enthusiastic. Anything to do with the arts, they would love to support, because again, it's somewhere for our students too, who are in the new film programs, to be able to show their work. So yes, we're hoping this is the first of many, and I think we should also acknowledge Harry Schwartz one last time, because this was one of his dreams. So I hope he's looking down on us and smiling at this time. So any, anything else for the order? No? Okay. The next regular city council meeting is scheduled for 6:00 p.m. on Wednesday, February 26, 2025, in the council chambers of the Civic Center located at 30001 Ladyface Court, Agora Hills, California, and this meeting is now adjourned in memory of Joan Yakavon. Thank you.